I'd like to welcome you all to our March meeting and call this meeting to order and ask for approval of the agenda.
I'm going to approve the agenda as presented.
I second. On favor. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Mrs. Schultz will lead us in the pledge. If you are able, please rise, followed by Mrs. Boyer will give the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity to be here this evening on behalf of Sholo School District's governing board meeting, and we're grateful for the opportunity to celebrate student success this evening. We're grateful for our district, we're grateful for our staff, and for our students, and for our parents, and we're grateful for all that we have and for the blessings that are placed upon this district. We ask you to please help us to make the right decisions and good choices for student success this evening, and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Item 3.2, recognition of the junior high cheer team, followed by the high school cheer. The junior high cheer coach and team come up.
So this is our Sholo junior high cheer team. We've got a mix of seventh graders and eighth graders here, very talented group of girls excelling at the schools as well as at cheerleading. We went down for a competition, competed against really intensely great Valley teams, and they were able to take the state championship. So we're super proud of them. Great season, great year. Good job, ladies.
Thank you.
Good job, ladies.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Good job, ladies.
Thanks for representing us well.
Good job.
We thank you.
Let it go.
Good job. Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you.
Does high school want to come up? The stunt team? No, sorry, all you guys.
As they're coming up, just one little side note about the junior high state championship is it's in high school typically you're broke up, you're broken up into different divisions. Junior high is just one statewide division, so all schools, all size, no matter what, you're competing against each other. So great accomplishment.
This is your seventh year in a row, right?
Yes.
Yeah?
Some of them, it's double for each on the team here, so.
How many on this team were eighth and junior high cheer?
Raise your hands if you did eighth and junior high.
Almost everybody. You didn't get on board in junior high? No.
You know, actually Ivan came to us this year. Most guys, when they come in, you never know for sure if they're serious. I won't lie. And he says, no, Coach, I'm serious. And if he did, he picked up this sport and made it shine. I mean, as a young man, I'm just saying. You can scholarship quicker as a cheerleader as a young man than you can in any other sport. Just throwing that out there. Anyway, once again, they are the best kids in the school to coach. I'm definitely biased, and I will always be biased. They become my children. Some of them I've known since they started kindergarten. Granted, I wasn't coaching them then, but I've known them that long, and so it's always rewarding to watch them grow. This one, I went to her baby shower. It's kind of weird when you think about it. It's like, ooh. But I'm not old. She is.
Do you have any more competitions this year? Or is this your last one?
Um, stunt team goes start. Yeah, we leave tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
For the last one for stunt team. Yep.
In reality, I think they don't have any competition.
Uh, they make it look like they don't, but they do work really hard, just like Coach Lindsay said. When you go down there in those Valley teams, it's a challenge, it's a chore. It's a lot of work to come up against some of those teams and then come on top, is always awesome. And to watch our littles that feed our program win, that's almost more fun than my kids. Almost. Almost. To watch them come and triumph. So, congrats to these kids once again.
Got a question for you.
Okay.
Do you ever video their routine, like in the competition?
Oh, yes.
So sometimes we'd like to see that.
I'm sure any parent in the room.
I mean, I don't know what you guys do. I mean, I know what you do, but I, you know, I mean, I'm sure you do certain things that you do and you do well and.
We do, and we definitely have things. Um, like when I was talking to Mr. Cashner, he, because we had, you know, a not as good run with the actual show cheer team at one competition we went to, it was great, but they penaltyed out. There are things you can't do on that, Matt, and if you do, that's it. You're done. You will get the deduction and teams are, these are won and lost by what?
Six point five of a point.
It is. It's pretty intense, though. But I would, I can definitely get you videos.
Yeah, we'd like to see, we'd like to see that. Or I would, anyway. I'm sure we all would. Maybe we can highlight that on a, on a website or something to show what they do.
They can email me the videos and I can do that.
Oh, they can.
I'll do that, yeah.
And I think one of the, one of the most proudest things that we have here, too, is that we are just a small town school district competing against these big districts down in the Valley, you know? So these girls really represent not only Sholo, but they represent the White Mountains. So, you know, which is great, because we've got, you know, other schools up here on the mountain that are rooting for us, and it's just, it's just neat. It's not just us, it's everybody, you know? We, Winslow, what, last week?
Yeah.
And just.
No, we meet with the other schools quite often, trying to make sure we have that camaraderie for the mountain, because I'd really like to see the programs grow, not just ours, but all of them.
Well, you look like you have a great fan base by looking at our audience. It will be pretty empty, probably in two minutes.
I just wanted to say that.
Can I just say one thing?
Go ahead.
No, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
We could have been this good without our coaches, obviously, and they decided to retire, but we're so grateful for them, and I just want to say that we're talented because of them. Yeah.
Do you think she's too young to retire?
Yes.
I think so. I think so, too.
But I was gonna say that. I was gonna say, Deanna and Coach Moya, you guys both, and also Ms. McGregor, this, the season for cheer and stunt doesn't just start, you know, like, like a basketball season or football season or one of those kind of things. These ladies are out working really hard throughout the entire summertime. I've seen you out, you know, running and practicing and cheering, and it goes all the way through our, our fall season, our winter season, and most of our spring season. So that's a lot of time and effort and dedication for each of you. So I want to, you know, not only congratulate the coaches and the participants, but also, one of the things I, I'll share a quick story. I, you know, my, I was sitting at a football game one day, and Brett and Angela Larson come and sat next to us, and I'm like, you're sitting next to the Clarks at a football game, you're crazy. Like, our family's nuts when it comes to football. And then a week later, he would, they were there again, and they were there the whole season. And so I talked to Brett and Angela. I said, I'm really impressed with the coach or with the parents of the cheer and the stunt team, because they are at every activity that they, that the cheer teams are at. These parents are dedicated, and they put a lot into heart and soul. And so as we recognize the girls and the coaches, I also want to recognize the parents for all the time and the energy and the dedication that they have for, for making this state championship possible, so.
I just wanted to tell you that I love the sweatshirts, A. Those are awesome. Those are great. But I wanted to thank all of you for representing our Sholo School District and the White Mountain community so well, because you always present yourselves with your heads held up high, but with grace and dignity, and we're grateful for that. So thank you.
Thank you. Do you need, do I need to introduce them? I kind of like to show that off. So I only have, I have two freshmen this year. I have Emma Halton and Sammy Zerber. Gee, gee, show yourselves. I'm just like, I'm right here. And then sophomores, I have Jesse Chevalier and Marissa Vogel and Randy. I always think she's, she's like my stunt teamer, so I always think she's like a senior every year. She's only a sophomore. Randy Lopez. And then I have juniors, which is Casey Jade Larson, Casey Clough, Chloe Blake. I have Jacey Perkins, who is, she's doing track also, so her season goes a little long into that season, and she's also, what, number one in the state for hurdles right now? So she's doing track right now. And we also have my seniors, Ivan Begay, obviously, and then Britten Morales, who is also doing track right now. So Casey's also doing track. She just got away a little earlier than they did. And I love them all. They are definitely my pride and joy. So.
Thanks, dude. You're awesome.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Congrats.
Thank you.
Jesse, congratulations.
Way to go.
Thank you, guys.
Good job.
Make sure it's written again.
Way to go.
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
Awesome.
I'm gonna miss you, girlfriend.
Thank you for all you've done. I love you. Thank you for all you do.
Good luck this weekend.
Thank you.
Good luck. Oh, picture. Picture. All your parents are here.
You're honest about it. Well, we want a picture with you guys.
Anyone taking it?
Yeah.
Is there someone taking a picture?
Angela's taking it back there.
Okay, ready? Lots of smiles. Thanks, you guys. Item 3.3, superintendent in part, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, members of the board, just to keep it short, we're, we're entering spring break next, next week, and that signals the fourth quarter of school. It is, sometimes it feels like it's gone really fast. I know sometimes it feels like it's going really slow, too. But the sites have just completed their benchmark testing this week, and I know the students were, seemed like they were honed in and focused and, and doing a great job with that. We also wrapped up our, our fall, excuse me, our winter sports, and all those teams did well. We had representation that stated in all of those. Just want to point out one, one thing, the girls' basketball team made it to the, to the final four. They lost to Chin Lee, who, who then won, they won the state championship. So, or I'll just say, won the state championship, excuse me. But we, we lost to, I'll just say, in the season by one, and we, we beat Chin Lee in the middle of, in the season. So it was, we were really close in that, and, and now our spring sports are going on. I don't know how we play baseball and softball and, and run track in the, in the winter and play golf, but we do. It seems like it's supposed to be spring, but it was still winter. And our track team went over and won the Round Valley Invitational, so both boys and girls. So a lot of really cool things are happening academic-wise. The kids are doing, doing well, and we, we have a lot of things just, just moving right now. So I don't want to spend a lot of time on my report, but just so you have an update of where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Housley. Item 3.4, call to the audience. Nothing? Okay. Item 3.5, future board agenda items, anyone? No? Can I say about this many? Okay, so the board had asked for the behavioral health committee, so you guys could have adequate time. If we could move you either sometime before our next board meeting, or if you think it's enough time for our study session, that hour and a half, so we can do that before our April meeting. That's why you weren't on tonight, because we didn't want to push you through, because we were meeting with the budget committee.
And that's the K5 committee that was supposed to be tonight.
The K high, behavioral high. Yep. That was. Okay, item 4.1, approval of the 2022-23 Linden Elementary School handbook.
Madam President, members of the board, items 4.1, 2, 3, and 4 are of similar nature. Each of the school sites have been trying to get their handbooks to, to you and, and their master schedules in time so that we can make decisions around those. And so 4.1 is the Linden Elementary Handbook, and it's presented for your consideration this evening.
Want to do them all? Or you want them all separately?
Do them separately.
Okay. Guys have any questions about Linden's handbook? Not entertain a motion to approve it?
I'm going to approve Linden's elementary handbook for 2223 school year.
A second?
One second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 4.2, approval of the 2022-23 Sholo Junior High Handbook, master schedule, I'm sorry.
So before you this evening is for your consideration, the master schedule for the junior high sixth through eighth grade next year, and they're working to make sure that they meet the needs of the students that are coming in. So in front of you is the master schedule, so they can start to plan for courses and students.
I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I know, is this the memo that requested the new positions as well?
No.
No? Okay.
Nope.
Sorry, that might have been another memo. Okay, never mind. My bad.
Motion to approve the junior high master schedule as presented.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 4.3, approval of the 2022-23 Sholo Junior High Student Family Handbook. Guys have any questions on that?
I'll make motion to approve the 2223 Junior High Student Family Handbook as presented.
A second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 4.4, approval of the Sholo High School Course Description Handbook for the 2223 school year. Guys have any discussion on that?
What motion we approve?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 5.1, approval of new hires and revised positions, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, members of the board, for your consideration this evening, we have a few considerations. We have Whipple Ranch, Esteban Corral as a custodian, moving to full-time from part-time, and Junior High High School shared robotics position, high school math position. So essentially, right now, Mr. Gillespie teaches part of his day in robotics and then teaches a couple math sections. As the robotics team, as you know, has kind of continued to grow and the demand for sections have grown in the interest at the junior high. So we have Mr. Marchand and Mrs. Clark have, have worked together to create a situation where Mr. Gillespie can teach the CTE classes at the high school and then add sections into the junior high schedule to accommodate some students there. We have a, there was one PE position that wasn't filled later due to a vacancy, and, and instead of replacing that with all the PE sections that they would have, we're adding robotic sections for that in that transition. Bringing Mr. Gillespie to full-time in robotics requires an addition of a math, a full math teacher, because, and it would require a full math teacher, because the demands, as I said, we're in an interesting situation. We're growing in students. When the AIA did our, our census, they calculated 960-ish students, and that was because of WMI and the high schools together. But our, our smallest class is our senior class, and everyone after that are, are larger, and we're continuing to see those. So demands on the math sections will continue to be there. So that is that, that position. And then you have the high, high school CTE position, CTE director, and then reading specialist. We bring the reading specialist, this is something that we're bringing to you this evening. We know that in SRS3, there's 20%, which is about $1.2 million. It has to be designated specifically to address learning loss due to the pandemic. One of the things identified in some of the meetings, as you've done your site visits and visited with teachers, as well as data that the administrative team has, has seen and pulled together, we, we feel like this is an important thing. So to add a, utilizing that money to add a reading specialist at Whipple Ranch, Nicholas Homestead, Linden, and the junior high is an important move to try to help us to address the deficiencies that we've seen due to the pandemic. And so we'd like to request for you, from you this evening, those additional positions, those as outlined.
Will CTE continue to fund Mr. Gillespie's position while he's teaching at the junior high?
He can only fund the positions that he teaches for those who are in the CTE portion. So CTE doesn't fund freshmen, so any freshman sections, we don't get funding for that, and it doesn't fund below that. So sophomores, juniors, and seniors receive CTEs.
Okay, thank you. So financially, we'll be okay by adding that?
Yeah, it's kind of because of the position that was open, we would, we would be asking normally to put that seven-period PE teacher back in, but Mrs. Clark and Mr. Marchand have worked to kind of work it around so that we can do that. The addition is in the math position at the high school, and we calculated it really isn't even a full addition. It's more like the half.
Thank you.
What motion we approve?
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any further discussion? Motion passes.
Madam President, can we go back to item 3.4, call to the audience? We have a member of the audience who didn't realize she had to fill out a form, so I'd like to see if we could bring her up here and let her address the board. Just state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Julie Clark, and first of all, thank you guys so much for your volunteer hours. I see it firsthand, and I appreciate you so much, people that are willing to take action in our community. And I have great concern at this point with the mass exodus of people leaving our district. Um, it is beyond my understanding what is going on behind the scenes, because there is something. I'm not pointing fingers or blame, but I am a very concerned parent who would like to understand what's going on and understand if there's anything that the, that the board's doing behind the scenes to help understand why that's happening. The greatest cause for concern are people like Kevin and Debbie Hall. They're dear to my heart. They have instructed my kids. They have helped me as a parent. I haven't spoken to them personally about why they're leaving, because it's just like heartbreaking to me. Something is going wrong in our district, and I, along with other parents, are willing to help out and do something about it, but the truth is, on this mountain right now, you cannot afford to buy a home. Okay? So when we do want to fill these positions, who's going to be able to afford to buy a home in our community, a well-qualified teacher that can come in and take over in the shoes of people like Kevin and Debbie Hall? Have you ever had the opportunity to sit across the desk from Kevin and get your concerns met? Have you ever had the opportunity to watch the way Debbie Hall meticulously manages a classroom from every last detail? I can't even imagine how many minutes in her time she spent running that classroom. And I haven't had the opportunity to observe her firsthand as a principal, except for in the hallway, and that might be the most telling. I've had the opportunity to sit in that hallway and test students for my son's kindergarten class, and every single time I'm in there, I see Debbie Hall attending to sad little children in need. I think she spends the majority of her day doing that. She loves those kids. She greets them at the door. A lot of children go to school not loved, and she is the ounce of love they need. So I, again, thank you so much for your time, but there is a mass exodus out of this district, and I want to know what our school board, who loves this school just as much as all of us who've been here through the years, why is this happening?
Mrs. Clark, that's three minutes. Thank you. Okay, item 5.2, approval of new hires, renewals, and transfers, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, for your consideration this evening, I'd first like to invite Alex Didering to come up. She was representative from the hiring committee for the new principals, and she, she'll present them.
Hi.
Hi.
It's been a long week.
You guys have been busy.
Ready for spring break, let me tell you. Okay, um, so I was one of the committee members for the principal interviews for Whipple Ranch and for Nicholas Homestead. The other committee members were Heather Douglas, Mrs. Cosgray, Dr. Taylor, and Corinne Anderson. We came together as a team, as an interview committee, and we set forth criteria for what we were looking for to support, let me go back, the type of leadership we're looking for to support our students, right? Because that's what we're here for. That's what I'm here for, right? So, so we set that criteria. We, the team created all the interview questions. We did the applicant paper review, and we determined, we had a homework exercise and a pre-interview task, and then we set up the interviews. And we, it was very time-consuming, because we wanted the best, right? Our kids deserve the best. So that is what we worked on. And then we just went back to our district values and what we believe in here and, and the pillars of success and what we're looking for to support our students, because, you know, sometimes I think I'm almost double-dipping, right? Because my son will be a first grader next year, and he, he loves Mrs. Hall, right? Like, and so I want him to continue to love walking into Whipple and to have that same love when he walks into it. So that's how we came together as a team, and we interviewed and, and we narrowed it down.
And it's the same formula we've been using for a few years, isn't it?
When we hire administrative positions specifically, this is the process that we follow. We did one thing that was a little bit different, is that the interview committee that Ms. Didering mentioned interviewed the candidate, and then, and I interviewed the candidates individually, but separately, and then we came back and established, the committee shared who the, the top three candidates were, and then we, and I also shared which were exactly the same, and then we talked about what brought the top two to the, to the top, and that's how the decision was made. So this evening is, as we present the motion as a whole, but I just wanted So this evening is, as we present the motion as a whole, but I just wanted to introduce those who we are recommending this evening. Mr. Van Nastrum, Nastrum, excuse me, he is right there in the back. Go ahead and stand up. Rich has earned two master's degrees and completed all of his coursework for a doctorate of education and school administration leadership. He was a middle school and a high school science teacher for eight years. He has held various leadership positions and leaving. Since leaving teaching, including academic coach, middle school and the K two levels. High school assistant principal, high school principal and the principal of third through fifth grade in Page, in the Page School District. For five years. He has been married to his wife, Susan, who's also a teacher at Linden. They have three sons, Matthew, who was in Philadelphia, David works for DPS. In fact, I think he pulled Mrs. Hall over at one time. And Mr., it was Mr. Hall was driving, I'm sorry. And, and then. Joshua, who's a junior at Eastern University outside of Philadelphia, he and his wife came to Sholo last summer. And Rich has looked forward to joining the team since then and, and we will be. Recommending him to serve as the principal Nicholas Homestead. Also, this evening with us is Ms. Dorothy Lamb. She comes to us with a vast amount of experience in education and training. She holds two master's degrees in curriculum and instruction administrative and administration and supervision. She's an expert in the area of RTI and school improvement. She comes with the ability to provide our staff with certified professional development. She is a passionate, or she is passionate about education and plans to spend the remainder of her career. Which is ten plus more years in our district, serving our children. So. We will, as the motion as a whole, will introduce Mrs. Lamb as the Whipple Ranch Principal. Thank you, Ms. Lamb. Also, I'd like to invite Mr. Marchant to come up and just share the process around the hiring of. The assistant principal at the high school.
All right. Thanks for having me again. Yeah. So to give you a brief rundown, obviously the assistant principal position at the high school is an extremely important position. Primarily because of its impact it makes on all stakeholders. They're regularly in contact with and working with the students on many different roles. Oftentimes difficult situations and regularly working with the parents. And also regularly working and supporting the teacher. And so because of this, we wanted to make sure that we were very thorough in our process. And, and so, and that we wanted, we wanted to have as much feedback going, going into the search as possible. And so it was very beneficial for us. We were able to, and, and all of the mid-year reviews I did with every teacher. Was able to, to ask them the question about what attributes they would like to see in the next assistant principal. And we were to get, able to gather all of that, all of that information and compile it into. Three key attributes that we were looking for and some additional considerations on top of that. And so we used that information to, to scan over a dozen qualified applicants for the position. And we had all, all candidates submit a five-minute video. Describing their interest in the position and why they feel that they would be a good fit. And what experiences they had that would make them a good fit. And so we were able to use all of, all of their application materials and that video. To determine who we wanted to bring in for a follow-up, a more in-depth interview. And again, this was a, this was a difficult move. We had a lot of great candidates, both internal and external. And at the end of the day, we, we unanimously selected our, our next candidate of Mrs. Jessica Femiak. So we're really excited to bring her on board.
Just to share a little bit about Jessica, if you, you can stand up Jessica, there you go. There's Mrs. Femiak. She is a, a science teacher by trade, but she has since moved into. What her current position is in with Maryville and the Phoenix Union School District, Union High School District. She leads the, she's the lead freshman teacher. Excuse me, leads the freshman team, which has, you, you mentioned seven hundred and fifty-something students. In just a freshman class. So Maryville has twenty-eight hundred students. She leads the, the team over the freshmen. For ensuring academic success. She coordinates interventions and support systems for students. She leads the, the data, organizes the, everything that is, is that team. She comes with a, a strong background and, and strong recommendations. And so as the motion as a whole, we will be asking. For Miss Jessica Femiak to be approved as. As the high school assistant principal. Also, for your consideration, Jennifer Stroop, which in accounts payable. That is replacing a vacant position. Talitha Brown, Health Tech. That is a, as you'll notice, that was a higher and then a resignation. So that was, I think it was a day or so there. Savannah May, kindergarten teacher. Sasha Jorgensen. Second grade teacher at Whipple Ranch, Ashley Humphries, Humphreys, excuse me, at second grade. At Whipple Ranch. Amber Jones is the financial secretary. And at the junior high, that was a vacancy due to a transfer. And then Christie Francis, a counselor at White Mountain Institute. That was a, a new hire due to a vacancy. So. For your consideration, also some transfers. Krista Sloan, moving from human resource specialist, transferring to the Medicaid billing specialist. Brandy Gray, the administration, administrative assistant to the board and superintendent, moving to the human resource specialist. And then there are another of others, the transfers for your consideration there this evening. Madam President, members of the board for your consideration. A motion we approve?
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations to all our new hires and welcome to the district.
Yeah, sure. Ms. Lamb.
You guys want to come up here so the audience at home, our big audience at home can see you?
Jessica, would you mind coming on up? Just so you get caught on the camera there.
So Whipple Ranch High School and Nicholas Homestead.
Yeah. So from our left to right, Ms. Lamb, the Whipple Ranch Elementary School. Jessica Femiak, junior or high school assistant principal. And Mr. Van Nastrum at our Nicholas Homestead. Thank you.
Congratulations to you all. Item five point two, approval of new hires, renewals, let's say that what you said?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Item five point three, approval of resignations, retirements and terminations, Mr. Housley.
Madam President, members of the board for your consideration, there are those listed inside the public content for your consideration.
Before I make a motion to approve, I was going through the letters a couple of days ago. And I was counting how many of our resignations are Cholo School District students and alumni. And people who lived their lives here, some that are retiring and some who are moving on. And some who are just leaving, not quite sure why, but I wanted to thank those people as well as everybody on the list. Thank you for your service and we're going to miss you and. It's just kind of sad to see so many Sholo Cougars leaving, but I wanted to make a motion to approve the resignations as presented this evening.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, motion passes. Item five point four, approval of stipends, volunteers and event workers.
Madam President, members of the board for your consideration, these stipends are for spring sports. So you'll see those there, those who are volunteering for those sports as well as event workers for your consideration.
We haven't had the best weather for spring sports.
I know.
I'll entertain a motion for approval of stipends, volunteers and event workers.
A motion.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item five point five, approval of certified staff for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
For your consideration, there are the, the list of certified teaching staff. Who we will issue contracts to for the upcoming school year. Those contracts will be made available. We're anticipating by Wednesday following spring break. Since staff will be, be out, we'll, we'll provide them once they get back and then they'll. But for your consideration this evening, Madam President.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the certified staff contracts for the school year twenty-two, twenty-three. So are we issuing contracts for a certain amount or I, I don't understand? Like at what amount will they be offered in their contract?
They'll be offered the same, the same contract that they received this year. Until we, if we are able to do anything additional to that, then we would have to make an addendum down the road. But right now that doesn't, isn't in our recommendation.
I just don't remember making the determination to do that. So did we as a board? Get contracts out? Yeah, at the same amount as last year? We motion on that? I guess I don't recall doing that. Did we?
This, this motion is to provide the contracts to the teachers. And the recommendation is that it would be at the same rate. Moving forward, there are teachers right now who would like to know whether or not there will be a contract for them. And so we want to make sure that we ensure them that there is a contract. Should there be the opportunity to provide additional compensation? Then we would have to do that. The board would have to do that through an addendum to said contract. So, so that they can begin to make their, make plans for next year and know, to know where they, they settle in. We would love to offer the, the extension of this contract.
Okay.
And to be clear, once we offer this, we can't then make an addendum to lower the salary that we're offering.
Well, that's not necessarily true. But I think the commitment would be that that's what you would intend to do. However, contractual language does say that if the state does not fund the school districts appropriately at any time. You could reduce everyone's salary by up to five percent.
But at least us offering these contracts is some indication that we're not planning on cutting salaries, which we are not.
The minimum expectation would be that we're offering a contract at the same rate as last year. And any addendum would be to increase that should we be able to. Yes. A motion we approve?
A second. On favor?
I have a quick question though. Are you guys going to move Carlos from junior high to high school since we just approved? You guys just going to approve it without, with him being at the junior high? Wondering which one you guys are going to do?
His salary would remain the same, wouldn't it?
But on the certified staff list, junior high or high school? Is that what you're asking, Brent? Is it still saying he's junior high on the certified staff list?
Uh, yeah, the list that you sent us says that he's at the junior high. So I'm wondering if. Individual making the motion was going to make that and correct that, or if they're voting on keeping. Cause we just approved him a couple of agenda items ago to go to the high school. I'm wondering if, which one you guys are doing.
The recommend, the recommendation would be to have him be at the transfer to the high school. So that was in the, the previous motion, you're, you're mentioning that he is listed incorrectly. Okay, so Madam President, the recommendation would be to, when we're issuing the contract for a reflex. So if you need to adjust the motion to make sure that it, that appropriately captures that, then that's what we would need. Do we need to? Undo that or just remotion? Okay. So how do you want that word, Smith?
You'll approve the staff of the transfer of Mr. Carlos from the junior high to the high school?
Okay, so a motion we approve five point five, including the transfer of. Carlo Hernandez. To the high school, right?
And approve all certified staff for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
That would be five point five.
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion? Motion passes. Item five point five, approval of certified staff for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. That's what we just did. Oh my gosh. Guys, we're never going to go home. Item six point one, first reading of policy J L D A A. I'll make motion to approve policy J L D A A for first reading.
So I'm, I'm a little confused about. This feels like we're cutting and pasting a, something that the other district, Tempe Union High School put a lot of effort into. They had a lot of meetings. They figured out what they wanted to be doing. They had a, a resolution. And it was a big long process to get to this finished document. And are you proposing that we are just adopt this document as is without going through a similar process?
Well, approving it for a first reading is just approving that, yes, we're looking at it. And then we have a month to actually kind of delve into it. And if we want to propose any changes to it or, or any, or discuss it further. Like at the second reading, then that would be the time to do that.
We discuss that. So we don't discuss those things now.
We don't have to, but we can.
Well, I just, reading through it, I think it, it has a lot of really good things in it, but. It's what Tempe Union High School, no, Tempe Union High School District. Decided worked well for their district and their needs and their priorities and their resources. And I just think it would be a lot more than us just going through like, oh yeah, this all sounds good. We'll do that too. When, when we may be putting into policy, something that we, that aspects of it may not be what's most needed. And aspects of it may not really be doable for our staff and our administration to actually follow through. So I think a lot more time is going to be needed to figure out what our version of this would be. I don't think we can just say, well, they, they went through a lot of work to put this, we'll just do it too. I think we can use it as a bit of a guide so that we're not completely reinventing the wheel. But I think we would have to go through a lot of the same steps that they did. And I feel like that was overlapping a lot. With the different things that we have been doing, like asking for the.
Committees.
Committees that we've been doing. And so I think we've already kind of been going in this direction of focusing on this more. But I don't think we're going to be able to just cut and paste little bits and pieces of this. Policy and call it our own because we, we had a lot more effort, we'd need to go into it for it to be what we need it to be. Does that make sense?
Want to make it a study session into the summer for the board?
I think we should hear back from the different committees and see which direction they think we should be going and use that information. To be deciding, not just using this as a, you know, template. Cause I think what would work better for our district. And I don't mean that as, I don't think this is useful because I do. I just don't think we can just be adopting a version of this policy because some of, much of it is specific to their district. And maybe we have different needs and we have different resources.
And Taylor make it for her district.
And that'll be more work, but it'll make it actually be useful instead of just something in policy that, then we're struggling to try and meet.
Well, I'm okay with tabling this and holding off.
I don't want to table the, the idea of it, but I just don't think we're going to be able to simply modify this a little to work. I don't want to table the, the idea of it, but I just don't think we're going to be able to simply modify this a little to work for us. I think we need to go through the work.
You know, we're not adopting this right now, right?
Right.
Okay. That's, that's the point. We, we have the first reading and then if you want to, or if we all want to take this and carve it up and write notes and stuff, then we get together and.
When, I'm not saying we can't do that, when we can have it for the second reading and we can talk about that. But my, my, I'm just saying that I think we're not going to be able to just take little bits and pieces of this. And I think it'll take a little bit more effort than that.
Do we have to have a second reading a month later or can it be longer?
It can be anytime.
It can be anytime.
Like I'd like to hear back from the different committees before we are creating a policy. I think they should help guide it.
So do you want to approve the first reading and then we'll work on it?
You can approve the first reading, but I'm just saying it'll need a lot of work.
Okay. Do you want to show the presentation on it or do you just want to wait with that?
That was just the presentation from the conference.
Okay. Okay. So I have a motion, is there a second?
Do we get a motion?
I motion, yeah, I motion.
Second.
On favor? Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item, sorry, lost my spot. Thanks. Item 7.1, approval of website vendor. Mr. Clark, are you presenting that?
So we're asking your approval for our vendor selection so that we can move forward with this project. I think this is going to be a fairly easy conversation because the application in the vendor we found meets and exceeds, exceeds our expectations. And it's also a very good financial choice. There is a memo that is included in your board docs. And at the end of the memo, I listed our, the criterion by which we were evaluating the different products. We had 11 non-negotiables that anything that we, we reviewed had to meet those. And then we had eight additional things that we wanted to see that were, we were more flexible on. We didn't consider those to be a non-negotiable. We originally started out with just a few items that we wanted. And every time the admin team got together and talked about our goals and our expectations for the new site, we just kept adding more and more to this list. Every time we talked to stakeholders, there were additional things that, that they added to it. So I won't go over each one because that would take about an hour. But we did have, we really did have some high expectations. And Aptig met and exceeded those expectations. A lot of times when you're reviewing stuff like that, you'll see something and say, yeah, that does meet our, our need. The, this specific need. But we found, the review team found that they were really impressed with how their solution fit into what we were, were expecting. And then financially, we, we got a bonus that we weren't expecting because Aptig includes a mass notification system. And over the years, our current solution for our robo calls has gotten glitchier and glitchier. And that was another item that we knew we were going to have to address in this, you know, in, in the, within a year. So the Aptig does include a mass notification system. It will completely address all the problems that we're having with our current solution. Some of those items are that staff that are marked as inactive are still getting calls from the system. Staff that are marked as active are not getting calls. We have some graduates that are still getting calls. We have some numbers that are on the do not call list that still get calls. So it, it's gotten glitchier and those, those issues are becoming more frequent. So when, you know, when we found out that this new website application would also replace that, it's kind of like when you remember somebody's birthday and you, and then they're, they have an anniversary. Just a few days later, you get a twofer because you remembered the one thing. Well, we, we got a twofer with this one because it solves two problems for us and not just one. It will cost us $12,000 to switch over. But then because we're replacing those two products, we will have a $2,200 a year savings. So in, in just five and a half years, we will recoup all of the costs that it costs, that it will, we'll incur to switch over. It's very likely that we will be using those products for much longer than, than five and a half years. So if you approve this project, our timelines are that Aptig tells us that most of, most of the time it takes three to four weeks to get the new website ready. We have more time scheduled in, than that. We really want to take our time and make sure that we, we do it right so that we have a good launch. We will be finishing the vast majority of the work before the end of May when a lot of the staff that are helping with, with, to do the work will be, will be leaving for summer break. And so we will have June to just fine tune it and we will be ready for our launch date on July 1st. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Clark, did we follow our procurement code in going out to bid for this?
Yeah, we received several different bids from, from different vendors. And they were all a lot more expensive. None of them included a mass notification system. And so even the, the upfront cost was, was more from them. It also, it, it didn't have that added benefit that we would save that money on, on the.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Clark, would you share with the board, the committee that, the committee so their names can be heard? Because they, they've done a great job really digging into this project and appreciate it.
Well, we have several aspects of this, of this project that we're kind of, we're creating a lot of subcommittees with. And we're trying to keep those, those subcommittees smaller and more focused on a specific task so that they can just really drill down on that task and get it done very well. So my, myself, one of my technicians, Brandon Clinkskill and Becky Field were on the review committee for the products. And we have, the other committees are made up mostly from members of the marketing committee so that we can spread out that, that work.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the website vendor. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
I'll make a motion to approve the website company as presented.
A second?
On favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 8.1 through 8.9 consent agenda, Mrs. B. Oh my gosh, 7.2, approval of bus change order. Sorry, Mr. Hozley. Mrs. B. So.
Anyone?
It's been a while. So in our, back in October, in the fall, we came and presented the need for the, the additional activity and athletic, the little mini buses. And we did go ahead and approve that, which is some of the, because we have quite a few of those buses now. I don't know if you've seen them out and about, but we feel that it is in the district's best interest to reallocate some of the funds. So the original order was for nine and that included a special needs bus. That will still come, but out of the remaining, we would like to use or change the order and cancel three of the little mini buses and instead get a district trip bus, which is what every other district, they have really nice trip buses. I just feel it's something, we don't really have reliable bus that we send out of town on some of these trips. We, you know, we hope a way that they get back. And I think that just for three, three buses, we already have, I think, eight of the little mini white buses. This would be something that would benefit the district, the students, all the athletic students, band and choir, the activities. It's a 46 passenger bus. It would have the, you know, AC, the little lights, just something that our district, I think, would be a better use of that money. And that's, that's not just me, we've talked about it. Transportation, just some of the experiences that they've had that, you know, on, on trips where we have to go and fix a bus while they're on a trip, tow a bus back, just repairs and things. So that's just, we feel would be a better allocation of that money.
After we approve this, are you going to let the little green bus go that I see on the side?
The junior high is waiting in anticipation to receive it as their trip bus.
They want to be gifted it, huh?
So the pickle, so.
Whatever makes you guys happy over there.
How are you going to decide? Because I'm sure a lot of times there's more than one trip going on. Who gets the nice bus and who gets the other ones?
Like in most districts, it'll be your varsity, like, you know. So. I'm not over who gets dibs on the bus.
Just curious.
And, and it's okay to use those serpents for that? Seems like, you know, it's kind of a luxury.
The, a lot of districts have purchased vehicles, like white fleet. So yeah, it's something that they've, they've allowed in SRTU, the flexibility to purchase the vehicles.
Well, initially you guys had asked for 11 white little buses, right?
No, nine.
Nine? Oh, okay. So we received how many?
We've received three, three so far.
We've only gotten three of the original.
Yeah, because the manufacturing, even though if we proceed with this, it may be a number of months before, it'd just be with the manufacturing delay, so.
If we do this, we'd still get three more coming, just not six more coming?
Correct.
Of the little buses?
Thank you.
All motion, we approve the bus change order.
A second?
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 8.1 through 8.9 consent agenda, Mrs. B.
So 8.1, we have the ratification of the expense vouchers for the previous month. 8.2, we have the ratification of the payroll vouchers. 8.3, approval of overnight and out of state travel. 8.4, approval of substitutes. 8.5, approval of all PTSO Booster Club financials. 8.6, approval of tax credit and activity account. 8.7, approval of the fundraisers. 8.8, approval of the governing board minutes for the February 10th regular meeting, the board's subcommittee meeting for February 25th and March 4th. And 8.9, approval of the donations. If Mr. Clark wants to, there's one.
Donor choose donated $597 to Ms. Carpenter's first grade classroom for literacy activities.
And everyone has till April 15th to give tax credit money for last year, right?
Yes. April 15th, yep. They can still come and donate at the district office.
And our, our online system is not working yet to do that?
No.
No. No, we ran into a couple of snags, so we're still in the works of getting that live.
Okay.
Madam President, I'd like to also mention to the board, when you're talking about donations that donors choose in partnership with Arizona Department of Education has offered $1,000 donor choose grants to, on a first come, first served basis for teachers around the state of Arizona. And I know we already have a, a number of, of stu, or teachers, excuse me, who have had their projects approved. And that's really exciting that they've gotten that extra $1,000 infusion into their classroom project. So we're hoping that every, every one of our teachers applies and has a chance to get one of those.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So motion.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. I'll enter, a motion to adjourn, please.
I'll make motion to adjourn the meeting.
A second?
On favor? Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Have a safe spring break.